December 27th, 2017, Board of Supervisors meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. I don't see Mr. Raymond Cole from Church of the Jesus Cross of Latter Day Saints here, so I'll ask Jeremy Farley to come up and do our invocation. And Jerry, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of your church. If you'll name your church or pastor off, would everyone please stand and remain standing?
Summit Baptist Church, and I'm on citizens' time right here, but I'll mark my name through it and just say thank you all so very much. It's been wonderful being employed here, and as I'm getting closer to that day to leave, that's something that I've had second thoughts about, but I know what I'm doing is right and certainly gonna miss working for you all, so I do appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you so very much, Lord, for the people that you have assembled together in this room, Lord, for those that are elect, Father, that will be taking office in the coming week, and God, for those that have been serving. Lord, we know that every person that serves in government serves at your will and your pleasure. Lord, you raise up kings and you bring them down. And God, I ask you, Father, that as we embark on the new year, Father, that your hand of blessing would be upon this place that we call home. God, I pray that you'd give wisdom, Father, in a way that only you can. God, I know that it is a thankless job to serve in government, and Father, I pray, Lord, that every person, every man, every woman, that serves and takes up the mantle of office, Father, I pray that you would give them courage. God, that you'd give them conviction. God, that you'd give them, Lord, just a power to do what is right. Lord, it is not easy living for you in this day. But God, I know that, Father, there is a God in heaven who sees us, Lord, sees us in our trouble, sees us, Father, whenever our hearts are hurting, and sees us when we need direction. And God, we're asking you this hour, that in the coming year, Father, your hand of blessing be upon our home. God, that you bless us financially. Father, that you bless us, Lord, as a community to unite in these days of ununitedness, Father. God, I pray then in the midst of all this division, that With County would stand as a light to this world and to this community, Father, that we are people that love you and love each other. God, I pray that in the coming year, Father, that you would draw us closer to each other. God, that you would draw us closer to you. And Father, that everything that happens in this place would be for the glory and honor of the God of heaven. I want to thank you for sending your own son, Jesus, to die on the cross of Calvary, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life. Lord, I thank you so much for this place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I want to thank anyone for coming this morning, and I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. And I see that no, but Jeremy signed up, but he said he's marking his name off, so if anyone would like to speak during citizens' time, now's the chance. Here and none, I'll close citizens' time. First item on our agenda is we've got some resolutions to present this morning, and I'll ask Dr. Gary Hausman to present the first one.
This is for Ms. Abby Storms, so Abby, if you'd come up. And you can stand right beside me, and it'll improve my looks while I read, okay? With County Resolution 2017-33, a resolution honoring Abby Storms. Whereas Abby Storms completed a very successful and distinguished high school track and field career, earning multiple individual state championship titles, and whereas Abby first defeated the triple jump competition in the 2015-2016 Virginia High School League State 1A Outdoor Track and Field Championship, capturing the state title with a distance of 35 feet, four and a half inches. Whereas Abby next advanced to the Virginia High School League State 2A Indoor Track and Field Championship in 2016-2017, garnering the state championship long jump title with a distance of 16 feet, seven and a quarter inches, and the girls' triple jump title with a length of 36 feet, two inches. You improved. And whereas Abby also advanced to the Virginia High School League Group 1A State Outdoor Track and Field Championship in 2016-17, netting her second state title in the triple jump with a distance of 34 feet, 11 and a quarter inches. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend Abby Storms for her outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors present this resolution to Abby Storms in recognition of her four indoor and outdoor track and field state championship individual titles, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of December 2017. And I understand that this is, you know, maybe coming a little bit late. We apologize if it is, but the other thing I will say is that I was a head track coach at Edward Tree High School for eight years. Nobody makes accomplishments like this without a lot of hard work and without a lot of dedication. And so, not only are we proud of you for what you've done, but the fact that you've pursued it and that you put in the work and the effort to make this happen, I'm gonna predict you're gonna be a success in life.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Abby, thank you.
Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So is the boss. Okay, I have the wonderful honor of presenting a resolution to somebody I've known for many years. Ms. Repace, would you come up? Ms. Gwynne, our treasurer?
Don't ask me to go on that stage.
No, I'm not gonna ask you. Okay, With County, Lord, can I? Okay, With County Resolution 2017-34, resolution honoring Deborah C. Repace. Whereas Deborah C. Repace graduated from George Wood High School in 1969 and was hired that year by the With County Treasurer, T. Barclay Allison, to type With County tax tickets. And whereas she continued to serve in the treasurer's office while pursuing her higher education at the With County Community College, earning a degree in secretarial science and business management. And whereas she was hired by Treasurer Allison to serve as a full-time deputy in 1972. And whereas she was promoted to chief deputy treasurer by the With County Treasurer Shirley Sutherland, and whereas she continued to only serve as chief deputy treasurer under Treasurer Walter S. Sam Crockett and Laurie C. Gwynne. And whereas she conducted, concluded her service with With County in 2017, amassing 45 years of full-time public service and 48 years of total public service spanning six different decades. And whereas she, getting tired. She has served under four separate With County Treasurers as a trusted and loyal public servant of the people of With County, having reflected well her faith, kind nature, and genuine sincerity upon all who met her. That now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled here in regular session in With, in Whiffle, Virginia, this 27th day of December 2017, does hereby express its appreciation on behalf of the citizens of With County to this distinguished woman for a job well done, and does convey its best wishes to her and her family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. And be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors does hereby direct that this resolution be incorporated into official minutes of the Board of Supervisors, and that the framed copy be given to Deborah C. Repace as a token of their high regards, adopted this 27th day of December 2017. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution is so adopted. Ms. Repace?
Thank you so much.
Debbie, thank you for your many years of service. I've known Debbie for many years. She's been a good friend, and she's been a wonderful employee to With County. And it's not often that we can stand up here and honor somebody that's given their whole life to With County and the service to the citizens.
I'm just blessed to have worked here. I never dreaded going to work a day in my life, except when the Cameron sticker line was out the door. But we lived through that, and I've worked for four great treasures, and they were my families, so I was truly blessed.
She was optional on the power immunity stays.
Yeah. Tyler, maybe.
And we also have a little gift to our appreciation.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if y'all will get a picture.
Okay. Thank you. I'll hold you back. You can fly. Hold up straight. There you go.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. And now, would Mr. Dr. Gary Hausman come up?
Was this a resolution thanking me for my no vote?
We won't mention that right now.
Okay, Well, I'm just.
Okay, With County Resolution 2017-35, a resolution honoring Dr. Gary M. Hausman. Now if I can get through this one. Whereas Dr. Gary M. Hausman was elected November the 3rd, 2009, by the citizens of With County Black Lake District to serve as their representative on the With County Board of Supervisors, and began serving on January the 1st, 2010. And whereas Dr. Gary M. Hausman served as a dedicated member of the Board of Supervisors for two consecutive four-year terms, ending on December 31st, 2017. And whereas his leadership and devotion to his work led him, led his fellow members of the With County Board of Supervisors of the name him vice chairman in 2012 and 2013. And whereas Dr. Hausman devoted countless hours to serve on various committees and boards, most recently serving on the Mount Rogers Community Service Board, the New River Regional Water Authority, the Crossroad Regional Industrial Facility Authority, and the Mount Rogers Community Action Program. And whereas he served as a member of the With County Board of Supervisors, Water Committee, Budget Committee, Fire and Rescue Committee, striving to strengthen the community, the county's public health and safety, infrastructure, and education. Therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled here in regular session in Whiffle, Virginia, this 27th day of December 2017, does hereby express its appreciation on behalf of the citizens of With County to this distinguished gentleman for a job well done, and does convey its best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors does hereby direct that this resolution be incorporated in the official minutes of the board, and that the framed, a framed copy be given to Dr. Gary M. Hausman as a token of their high regards, adopted this 27th day, December 2017. I entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
That's all right, folks, I'm on my way out. Don't let me know this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So adopted. And Gary, I know you might have a lot to say this morning, but I want to thank you for all, for your years of service that I've been here. You've been a good friend. I know we haven't agreed on everything, but when we walked out the door, we're still friends. And I appreciate that.
That's absolutely the truth. And the other thing I'd like for you to know is I'm resigning from all that stuff. You know that.
Well, I thought about that. Which one is it?
Mount Rogers, I still have to pull out. But, well, thank you all. I tell you, of course, I'll, you know, in just a little bit, I'll, you know, I'll thank you again, but it has been an honor, you know, to serve. And you're right, we haven't agreed on everything, but the one thing I can honestly say is that everybody that I have served with on the Board of Supervisors has the best interest of With County at heart. Now, you know, do we accomplish that or try to accomplish it in different ways sometimes? Sure, but that's what, that's what makes things go forward. So I appreciate it. And thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Get a picture. Did you get a picture?
Oh, oh, okay. I would've wanted a tie. Okay.
I do want to say Mr. Willis is out of the country today, or he would've been here for his last meeting. And excuse me. But we do have a resolution honoring Mr. Willis, and we're gonna adopt it, and we will read it and present it to him at our next meeting when he can attend. I entertain a motion to adopt resolution honoring Stephen T. Willis, 2017-36.
I'll make that motion.
They have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution so adopted. Okay. Now, let's get into our agenda. Approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, December 12th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve.
They have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any correction or changes need be made to the minutes? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes, six with one absent. Next item is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
Make a motion with payment.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Any invoice, any board member would like to pull out or have any questions about?
As a Christmas present, I'm not even gonna vote no on the Apex stuff this morning.
Well, we appreciate that, Pop Town. Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes, six with one absent. Okay, moving into all business. We have the rules of procedure and meeting calendar for 2018. Entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, this is just for informational. You usually adopt this at the first meeting of the coming year.
Okay.
We did make the change as requested by Mr. Hale and supported by you all, moving the meeting to Thursday, December 27th, I believe it is, next year, on the agenda.
Okay. Zing Bay, I know we've had it for half a couple of weeks now. Does anybody have any other amendments they'd like to make to the rules of procedure?
I'm okay with all those changes.
Okay.
But maybe we need to change it, then all former members need to show up.
Okay, we'll take, bring it up at our first meeting in January. Royal Retreat Lease.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have been working with DGIF Department of National Services quite a month, quite a bit since the month of December. Have had several discussions with them, as mentioned to you last time. Their intention is for us to continue operating under the existing lease that we have assumed to have been operating under for the last 20 years. The Royal Tree Lake Authority, when it disbanded in 1998, I believe it was, the motion, the resolution adopted by With County Board of Supervisors, the town of Royal Tree and the Lake Authority, all transferred the, that lease requirements to With County. That is what we have been operating under during that entire timeframe. However, DGIF never actually had a, executed lease with With County during that timeframe. So they are still working through the paperwork on their side. They've asked us to make certain we had some insurance changes listing all the property out there, showing the DGIF has been additionally insured. This college took care of that last week, and they said we would continue under the same provisions that we've had been, and they'll have paperwork in the future for us to work on. But that is where we currently stand on.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Here and none, Royal Tree Firegrounds?
Yeah, Royal Tree Firegrounds, you have handed out in front of you an assignment of lease, and basically this transfers the lease to the Fair Association, to the Mountain Empire Tractor Club, and Glade Mountain Saddle Club, with the same terms and conditions. As you're aware, we have received letters from the Tractor, from the Fair Association requesting this, and the Tractor Club and Saddle Club have sent letters to us requesting for them to take over the lease. I would request the board approval of the assignment of this lease, contingent upon acceptance of Mountain Empire Tractor Club and Glade Mountain Saddle Club, and all insurance requirements being met, and authority for the county administrator to sign this assignment of lease.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve and authorize the signature of all county. Stephen, are you gonna, is this something that you will sign?
I can sign this, or if you'd like to sign it, Mr. Chairman?
No, it's the county administrator to sign the lease agreement.
I'll make that motion.
They have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Insurance, I mean, it's how, how are they dividing the responsibility for the, for the lease, I mean, for upkeep, for insurance, and for things like that? Because we have two entities that are staying separate entities, the way I understand.
That, I've asked them to present to us their agreement between the two of them of how they are going to be doing that, and the one thing that it does state is basically assuming all liabilities and obligations jointly and severely that way, if one of those entities should happen to dissolve in the future, the one entity can remain with the lease and run with it. But they have been negotiating and discussing that amongst them as to how they were going to share the insurance cost. And I don't have the answer to that, but that is something they have understood. They've asked quite a bit about the insurance obligations that are put together in the lease.
Just question, is that something that we should know before we approve a lease?
Well, that's why I say contingent upon their acceptance and meeting the condition. They've got to provide us the copy of the insurance before I will execute this agreement to show that they have it in place.
Any more questions? Here and none, I entertain a motion.
You have a motion.
I have a motion. Any more questions? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on into our agenda, we have reports. Treasurer, Ms. Lori Gwynne. Good morning, Ms. Gwynne.
Good morning.
And I hope you had a Merry Christmas.
I did. Very busy, exciting time for us this week in the treasurer's office, so we, we had a lot to look forward to coming back today. Okay, starting with your financials, from your November financial report. In the general fund, our current balance, again, as of November month end, was $31,119,216. And the consolidated account contained a balance of $47,2,812. As you can see, especially on the final page of that report, the, it's kind of more of, on the treasurer's collection for taxes, November, taxes really started coming in. Of course, we didn't get those out until mid-November, and then with the extension, money's really coming in, so you can, there's a huge difference in the accounts from the end of this report to right now. We're working through a lot of mail. We've really been inundated, it seems like, more this year with mail than what I noticed that we were last year. So we're trying to get work through that as quickly as we can, but also get our customers waited on as they're coming in the office. But, but I feel like tax collections are going really well. It's helped the folks that the fifth got by them, and they didn't realize there was an extension, so when they called, they've had a huge sigh of relief. But I think the next three days, we're still gonna have those folks that are normally the December 3rd, 4th, and 5th people. They're now gonna be the December 27th, 28th, and 29th people for 2017. So we are open until 6:00 today, tomorrow, and Friday to try to accommodate everyone as best we can, so, but like I said, I feel like it's going really well. You know, we run into a few things and, and just, you know, we work through it and keep on going, so. But all in all, that's kind of where we are, just still taxes right now, so hopefully I'll have a little bit more for you next month that I can tell you about.
Well, we appreciate, I know the board appreciates your hard work and please relate to your employees, that we do appreciate all they do this time of year. I know it's a busy time for everybody.
It is. I just tried to recruit Debbie to come back for this week, but I noticed she left, so I'm anxious to see if she's at the office when I get back down there. She chose to go home.
Well, in, Lori, in general, did, were people appreciative of the extension?
They were. They really were. You know, you get a lot of comments because the bill had the fifth on it, and so we stressed that the deadline was extended after the bills were printed and mailed, but they did have that extension. You know, a lot of people receive their bills and just things that we're having to work through system-wise, you know, Faye's office has been just as busy as we've been, trying to get a few of those things worked through, but, but for the most part, everybody seems to be real appreciative of it, or, and right now, we're getting the phone calls of, you know, I need to mail my payment, but it won't get to you by Friday, but we do accept postmarks, so as long as it's postmarked by Friday, it's considered on time. But, but, yeah, everyone's, everyone's been, been really good. You still have those that choose to complain, so, but that's part of it. You always have those.
No.
So anyway, but, any questions this morning?
Do you have any tax tickets to pay taxes?
No, we just charge extra if you don't.
Okay.
And even more, even even more if you're a board member.
I meant to bring mine, it's more than I forgot.
No, we can look them up for you. As long as you know your name, we can look them up for you.
Yeah. If they have a checkbook, you will accept it.
Exactly, or a credit card, debit card, we'll take whatever you have, cash, as long as things strike.
Gary, can I borrow your credit card?
Sure.
But, yeah, come on down, we'll get you taken care of. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Lori.
Y'all have a happy new year.
Happy new year.
Mr. Hausman, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Oh, well, thank you.
You've not just represented Black Lake, but the county as a whole, so it's.
Well, thank you.
You know, all of you have your, with the exception of Tim, have your individual districts, but we're all still here for, for everybody as a whole, but, but thank you. And I'll pass you on the road, 'cause I generally do. I don't see you, I just pass you.
You don't run off, do you?
Well, usually I'll wave if I realize it's him, but he doesn't wave back, so I've noticed he doesn't.
What car are you driving?
Can't tell you.
Okay, our commissioner of revenue, Faye Barker.
I don't have anything to report at this time, thank you.
Well, thank you, Faye, and thank your office, I know, and to your employees. The board has really appreciated all they do this time of year and throughout the year, both your offices. I mean, you know, we depend on y'all a lot for bringing, making sure the revenue gets into the county.
Mr. Chairman, it's today, and I'll, we'll include it on the next day package, so, and thank you for discussing what she wants. She has sent us her 2017 report. Budget Committee did view that the other day, and I shouldn't have included that in this package, we'll put it next one and email it out to everyone. But did see some increases, as expected, with the taxes this year, but the total increase in taxes from 2016 to 2017 is anticipated with the current tax levy to be about $672,000, and that, dollars, and that comes in line, the real estate is about $283,000 more, and that comes in line, including the real estate tax of .49 cents, plus the increase in the land use value, which we thought would be about $30,000, so that, that falls in line with it. Personal property increased as well. The only decreases we had were in mobile homes, which we knew during reassessments, some of the mobile homes had not been worked during the last reassessments, so the value decreased in them. That was a decrease of about $49,000, and we did decrease $7,000 in merchants capital. But I appreciate Faye sending us a report, and we'll get it out to everyone, so that you guys know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burr. I don't see the- Don't see the sheriff here this morning. Chief Deputy, you have anything to offer to the Board this morning?
Yes.
Well, I hope you had a merry Christmas and a happy new year, Charles, and I know everybody's sheriff's department, and I hope they have a non-busy season. I know it's been busy in the last few weeks, but I hope everybody drives safely and stays off the road if they do have a little bit too much to drink. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we don't have any fatalities in With County on the road this day. Would like to recognize Mr. Brian Vaught, our supervisor-elect in the Black Lake District here this morning. Thank you for attending. And we'll move on to our committee reports, and we have the Water Committee.
All right. The Water Committee met on December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, making the following recommendations. First is approval of the exit twenty-four wastewater treatment plant, project change order number three. This is an increase of five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars for installation of a water line and electrical service to the press.
Okay. Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next item?
Approval of the engineering service agreement amendment number two for the exit twenty-four wastewater treatment project plant, and this is an increase of thirty, thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay. Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
What did we get for the thirty thousand dollars?
There is a couple of different things that were added in here. Part of it is basic services for a design phase to run the stub up to Circle K. The next is the basic services for the construction completion and the final phase of it for eight thousand dollars. And then, the EJCDC documents have made a change on it, these were executed several years back. The typically, the EJCC includes as-built drawings, which is very important to have in the treatment plant. The agreement did not have as-built drawings within it. Mr. Vaughn went through the engineering agreement, carefully worked with them, went back through other engineering agreements to come up with the cost of what it was. So all of those items combined together are thirty thousand dollar change.
But that cre, increase is just for engineering? That doesn't build that stub line up there, does it?
Correct. This is just engineering expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Number three is proceeding with the wastewater service for Circle K at exit twenty-four as proposed by Treasurer Engineering.
Okay. Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
This gets into what Mr. Hale was talking about, be a, a final change, or change order repaired on this. But this allows us to prod the stub up beside Circle K and then run along the back, to the backside of that property to serve future growth in that area, plus an assist with getting them connected, which is critical for this service, this thing running down there. So that will be coming in the future, but we, the Water Committee did recommend proceeding with that project.
Okay. Here are no other questions. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Amending and appropriating six hundred and eighty-three dollars to line item nine zero five zero dash four seven zero four one zero, Bearin Springs Division One permit warrant.
Okay. Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
And the final one is approval of the Kitchen Nixon, Kitchen Wilkinson Nixon project, change order number three. This closeout change order decreases the final contract by seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Okay. Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any question or discussion? It's, it's nice when it's a decrease. Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Moving on to Budget Committee. Dr. Hausman, since Mr. Willis ain't here, will you be, do the honors?
I will. The Budget Committee met on December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, made the following recommendations. One, amending and appropriating seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars to thirty-one oh-two dash forty-seven oh-oh-one-five for costs associated with the Spillman Records Management System.
Okay. Again, come from, from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What is it?
This, this, if you all remember, last year, we approved the agreement with Spillman Services back in probably December of last year, and we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office to split what costs were gonna be ours and what costs were going to be the Sheriff's, including the upcoming year. We had our first payment due in last fiscal year. The second payment was due December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The agreement we entered into of the seventy-three thousand dollars, forty-six thousand dollars, was to come out into electronic summons with a police activity fund, a twenty-seven thousand dollar difference was coming out of the general fund. That was all in the agreement. In the budget development this year, the Sheriff included fees for the maintenance fees in there, but it did not include the actual system that we had already agreed to. It was an oversight in the budget that should have been included in there with it. This just amends and appropriates, puts it back in the budget so that we can get the payment due.
Any more questions? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
And the second thing is amending and appropriating five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-six cents to thirty-one oh-two-one dash forty-six one four two oh. These are funds that were donated by various individuals and businesses for the Shop With a Cop event. So this is money that has come in, and we are amending and appropriating. And is there something else?
I, I would like to make a clarification on it. After confirming with the Sheriff's Office, I would request this be changed to three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-six cents. The number he had included the fifteen hundred dollars from the Walmart Foundation that we have previously amended and appropriated. So all we need to do is thirty-eight, twelve, seventy-six.
Okay.
Take the fifteen hundred dollars off.
All right. Well, we will, we'll make an amendment to that, to that motion then, to make it thirty-eight hundred, twelve dollars and seventy-six cents.
Have a second on the amended motion. Have a motion and a second. Okay. Any more discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we've got is the Sheriff's Office has thirty-one dollars it needs to return to Department of Criminal Justice Grant Management. Just recommend approval of, of sending back that money for funds not used from the grant.
Okay. I entertain a motion to send back the thirty-one dollars. So moved. Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion or questions? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the VACO BML refinancing that we have talked about over the last month or so. In, in the process of going to financing, refinancing, we had to make a final drawdown of the funds that were sitting out there in U.S. Bank. The principal amount that had been borrowed had been drawn down for construction of the New River Regional Water Authority and then lines between Withfield and, or between Austinsville and Withfield, with the cost sharing of all that's been spent between Withfield, With County, and the New River Regional Water Authority. These funds have been drawn down, and they will be dispersed to the entities under the same percentages as what they have been paying on it. The New River Water Authority will receive forty-eight point two percent, Withfield twenty-one point five percent, and With County thirty point three percent. The refinance fund results in a debt service savings of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. So, just so Mr. Grant can proceed, working with the Treasurer on dispersing these, I would just request the Board's approval to transfer these amounts to these entities.
To what?
To transfer these funds to the entities in these percentages.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Stephen, was there some prohibitive thing there that that couldn't have been paid against the principal?
Yes, we could use it to draw down, to pay interest that had previously been paid. We worked closely with Webster Day and Kennon's folks, VACO BML financing every option we could go through, and, and this was the viable option that worked for how we could do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
And I do appreciate the work that Bruce and our Bond Counselor and all put in on being able to finalize that for us, so we, we wanted to get that one done while the interest rates were very good. The next item is just a easement at the Apex Center for ADP to install their power lines to serve the property. Request approval of this easement and authority to sign.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the easement. Any discussion or questions?
I thought maybe Gary was on there.
I'm in generous mood today.
Comment, Bill, do we have any, do we have any idea when they're gonna start?
They're waiting on this easement to start, seeing if they give it.
Engineering's done?
Yes, sir. They worry for hours out there. We're just gonna coordinate, make sure the lights go, the lights are on and pointing in the right direction, but just get everything with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion passes. One absent. Next item?
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the, just letting you all know, the CRYFA invoice has been received. Once the Treasurer has confirmed that these three companies have paid their machinery and tools tax, she will be dispersing this amount to the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Total amount this year is four hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. That will be dispersed once we deduct our five percent, I would say. And the Authority itself, once they receive those funds, will be taking those and issuing a dividend payment back to the localities associated with this.
Okay. Next item?
Next item is Hurt and Profit. Economic Development Committee had previously reviewed this. As, as most of you are aware, one of the front, one item we have been working on is the marketing of our sites adjoining the Apex Center down there. We bought, we, we, we used about forty-one acres for the Apex Center. We've got over fifty acres adjoining that. And what is here is a proposal from Hurt and Profit to develop sort of a master plan and layout and cost estimates of where the road would go through there, how the pads could best be laid out. And then this information then would work into a full engineering design that we could proceed with in order to get the road constructed. As you know, we have had some interest in some lots and some property down there. And, and to me, this is sort of like what we've done with Progress Park. We had an engineering design of roads and lot layouts, and then they could be moved around and deep be. But the staff's recommendation is to proceed with, working with Hurt and Profit on this master plan.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. You've heard the explanation from the county administrator. Any more questions?
This should open that up for development.
Yes.
Any more questions or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
I'm surprised myself. Yes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Passed with six, one absent. Next item?
The next item that is on there, Mr. Chairman, is something I just received right before the, the break, before we left last week, and I sent an email around to you all. This is some information that Jonathan Sweet, Gilaskey County Administrator, sent regarding a cigarette taxation equality. They are trying to get a coalition together of, of counties to support this. If you remember, Mark Flynn came in over a year ago with, with a group trying to get enough people together to form a coalition. That one, we did not ever receive any additional information on. Mr. Sweet is trying to work with six counties, primarily those counties west of, of Gilaskey County. But they have requested would With County be willing to provide two thousand dollars towards this issue? And I just put it on the Board package for consideration by you all. No action is necessary today if it's something you want to refer to a committee or discuss farther. But as you know, VACO is already working on this on our behalf, and we've got legislators carrying this, this cigarette taxation, either by referendum, which Mr. Carrico is covering, and obviously VACO is working on each taxation for all. Just give it out for your audience.
Did he mention, have you talked to Mr. Sweet? Has he mentioned who's carrying a bill and what the bill is?
His, his email just referenced that Mr. Carrico was carrying, about the bills that Mr. Carrico was carrying. He did not reference any other additional bills coming from anyone else on this.
Is Senator Carrico bringing forth the bill just for With County, or has he, has he changed it?
Well, he's talking to the caucus in the Senate, and then he is gonna make the decision to either put forth the bill where all counties can put a referendum forth, or, and if they didn't want to do that, then he would put forth one just for With County to have, to have it on a referendum. I take it that, that that won't be decided until they get to, well, they may have already decided. I haven't talked to Senator Carrico over Christmas, so he may, they may have already decided, 'cause the bills, the Senate bills had to be in the first of, the first of December, and he may have put two bills in, one for just With County and one for all counties, so.
Let me ask you a subjective question. Does he show any enthusiasm for it? I mean, last time that was put in by our delegate, I don't think our delegate showed any enthusiasm at all for it.
Well, yes, and, and I disagree with you as far as Mr. Campbell not showing any, he did speak in front of the committee, spoke very highly of the bill, and argued for it. And, and he also got several other delegates to speak on behalf of the bill and argue for it. VACO argued for the bill. I argued for the bill. The Police Association, the Sheriff's Association argued for the bill. And one person argued against it, and they tabled it. So I.
Well, I, I guess my, my evaluation was coming from the fact that when, yeah, when he presented the bill, apparently said, "Present it by request."
Well, and, and I guess it was. I mean, we requested it. The Board requested it, so. But he did argue for the bill.
Okay.
And he did get three delegates, even in Northern Virginia, to argue for the bill too, but they still tabled it in the House.
The six counties that they're traditionally trying to work on is Gilaskey, With, Grayson, Carroll, Land, and Bogotown. I did leave off counties, but that's what they were. I did leave off counties, but that's what they were.
I guess we're in a discretionary period about this, aren't we?
Yes.
I think if we do our job with the people we know, that we don't need to hire a lobbyist. Now, that might be the way Gilaski County operates, but I don't know that we get the value of hiring an independent lobbyist. I think that VACO and BML does a great job. I've got a meeting pending in January to try to get bipartisan support for them to sign on the bill, which I think would be a good thing. Once the House decides who's going to be the house, we'll know more, and that's been put off again. Not happening today. And the other thing is I've contacted Tessa County Delegate, and Blen County can request that he co-sponsor the bill. And the Gilaski model just doesn't think big enough. It's, it's pretty tight locomism.
Well, I'd suggest that, you know, I mean, we're not going to vote on today, but Stephen, could you find out what the other surrounding counties that he's asked to participate in this, what their decisions are? And then we'll take it up and make our decision.
Will do.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Burr?
I believe that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Our county attorney, I don't see this morning. We'll move on with our supervisors' reports. And Dr. Hausman, the Black Lake District?
Well, I really don't have anything to report as such, other than to, I do want to thank With County and the voters from Black Lake and, yeah, Brian, you'll see, they're wonderful people. They really are. I know that you know that. But for the opportunity to serve, and it's been a real learning experience. I had no idea, until I came into this, how much time it takes and how, yeah, how many meetings and committee meetings and emails and board packets and correspondence and phone calls and, and things like that. But it has been a real learning experience. And just about every, every experience I've had has been, you know, good. Well, except the lady from California called me at midnight about the dogs. That, you know, that was not pleasant. But other than that, and I want to thank you all for everything you do. And now that I'm not going to be on the, on the county email, there is my card. It's got, of course, my home and my cellphone number on it, and it's got the email that I use, so if you need to get in touch with me, or, as you can see, if you need a church. But, yeah, please, you know, if I could do anything to, you know, to help or whatever, you know, just, you know, give me a call, you know, shoot me an email or whatever. But again, I want to thank, and, you know, Stephen and Martha, I appreciate the fact that you've put up with everybody. I mean, you know, because I know that sometimes it's not always, it's not always easy. And when I say put up with, I mean, you know, trying to juggle everything around, and all of a sudden you set a meeting, and, you know, I can't come, Tim can't come, somebody can't come, so you have to, you know, to juggle it around and everything. So I want to, yeah, thank you for, you know, for that. So, all in all, it's been a good experience, and I guess, you know, as the old saying, you know, I leave this with the, you know, with mixed emotions. Happiness and joy. But, no, I'm ready to, you know, to start another chapter, so thank you all.
Well, Gary, I want to personally thank you. I've served on several committees with you. You've been dedicated. You've been, you don't miss very many unless you absolutely have to, and you're always there. And your knowledge of the county and the budget and knowledgeable now more about fire and rescue than, and sometimes we want to be, but I appreciate all the help you've given me over the years. It is a learning experience. I mean, nobody really knows till they set up here, and you dive into all the work that we have to do for the county, and it is time consuming. And Mr. Hell, do you have anything to say?
I really going to miss him, you know. There's an old Polish proverb, "Don't match wits with your enemy unless you're sure he's armed." Well, Gary is not an enemy, but he's always armed.
Well, I hope that I've listened to Rhonda's, Rhonda's advice. She always, you know, tells me, "Well, say what you had to say, but don't be obnoxious."
And I don't think you have.
I really appreciate, appreciate your votes today, not only that in season of cheering goodwill, it's a good way to leave.
Anybody else? Coy?
Yeah, I had a couple of votes I turned in to Stephen earlier, and I would like to say thank you to Sheriff for picking up the trash on Store Hill, and there must have been forty bags in a forty mile. I don't understand, must have been dumped that area, as I do. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard, Mr. Thorpe and Mr. Hausman. Thank you. And I didn't figure out how you're going to get rid of this twenty-five cent hour job, but I guess you all...
For me, it means that I get to quit writing the check every month.
That's all I am.
Okay. Before we get into the rest of the reports, Gene, you want to say anything to Dr. Hausman?
I just enjoyed working with you, Gary. It's been a pleasure to meet you. Something that I ever would have gotten the opportunity to have been before, so...
Well, that's true. I don't, I don't think we would have, you know. We, you know, kind of live on the north and south of the county.
Mr. Willis? I mean, Mr. Willis. Mr. Lester. Lord, it's been a long Christmas. Y'all have to forgive me. I've got a two-and-a-half-year-old at home, Timothy and Alex, and extended family and stuff. I've got a house full. In my mind, this ain't working too good this morning.
Wait till the next one gets here.
I know. It's due in March, so...
Are you always working with you, Dr. Hausman?
Well, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well, we're all going to miss you, Gary, and we wish you well in anything you do. I know you've been working hard on a cabin somewhere.
Yeah, over in Cedar Springs, and it's, that'll become a full-time job through spring, I guess.
And I hope you enjoy sitting on the porch and twiddling your thumbs and reading your Bible.
I will, and thank you for making me sound a hundred years old.
Okay, we're going to our board reports. East, East Whiffle, no, West Whiffle.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. West Whiffle's not here, Fort Chisel District?
Not anything at this time.
Okay, Spiegel District?
I don't have anything at this time. I've already talked to Stephen and figured out what I need to tell you.
Coy Ledmine, have you got anything else to add?
I don't give a note.
Okay. And me, I want to wish, hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. I don't have anything to report as far as the county is concerned, the phone calls or anything, complaints. But I do wish, I hope everybody has a Happy New Year and a Safe New Year. And I want to thank Stephen and Martha and the rest of the county staff for a good year. They've worked hard. All the county staff works hard. And I hope they relay that to our county staff, that the board really appreciates all of what they do for the county. We do have one item before we go into new business. Mr. McRoberts has a nominee for this. Ledmine Rescue Squad?
I do, and I have the...
Board?
I have a lady that's, she's on the rescue squad down there, and I figure she might be good, and I've talked with the members down there about her, and her name is Jim Lovey Good. And I would like to place her in that, and take Mr. Eno's place.
Okay. We have her name brought forth as a nomination. Do we have a second?
All second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any discussion or questions? Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Stephen, do we have any openings? I know we have, we do have two openings...
Two openings on With County, I believe.
With County that we do need to fill. I forgot all about them until somebody mentioned they just had three members on the, on the rescue squad, and we need to be getting them filled. Mr. Lester, if you would be looking, and I'll get Ms. Lawson and see if she can find somebody for the With County Rescue Squad Board. Any other boards? Is Ledmine's full with her appointment?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And that'll be effective January first, when Mr. Eno is leaving December 31st.
Okay. Okay, moving on to into our new business, we have consent counter. Entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
Should we get a motion?
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is fiscal year eighteen expenditure budget and third quarter appropriation. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the third quarter appropriations. Any other questions or comments? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the Mount Rogers Community Service Board, fiscal year seventeen audit. Mr. Burr, you want to summarize the findings, and we'll have a motion to approve, to accept...
Yeah, basically, no problems really identified in the audit. As a side note, I will mention, they have been working closely, not audit-related, with the Virginia Small Business Authority, where we had the loan that they vindicated that had not been fully paid by the Mount Rogers Community Services Board years ago. They worked with our federal legislators, and we have received information that they asked for how much money the sheriff did not receive that was withheld, and it does appear that they're getting that issue resolved, and that'll be taken care of. As far as the audit, just recommend acceptance of the audit, Mr. Chairman.
Entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, fiscal year seventeen audit. I am on that board. Robson Farmer Cox did come up and give a presentation. Everything was, they said was fine. We were, the commission was doing good. I will note that, and I don't have numbers now, but, you know, the commission there at one point in time, you know, was right scraping the bucket to get from one pay cycle to another, but now we've turned it around and, and we have over three hundred thousand dollars in reserves, so the Planning District Commission is doing good. Do you have anything to add, Stephen? Here none? I'll entertain a motion to accept the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission's audit.
Aye.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Joint Service Authority Audit. Mr. Burr?
Yeah, well, several of y'all are, the members on that, the audit is a clean audit. The only comments we received were the same comments that any small organization gets, and that's, they've got two employees. It's difficult to have accurate separation of duties when you only have two employees, but other than that, it was, the audit was fine.
And I will, Mr. Horni and Mr. McRoberts and myself is on that board, and they do a good job down there. I mean, they, Lynn and his staff, they had to deal with DEQ and not getting riled up with DEQ and keeping clean with them is a, is a mountain achievement on its own. Here none? Does anybody else have any questions? Entertain, I entertain a motion to approve their audit?
Accepted.
Accepted.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So accepted. Okay. Mr. Burr, do we have anything else to bring before the board at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments made earlier about staff. We appreciate it. It's been a very busy year. We look forward to the upcoming year. Going into next week, it's holidays, the first two days of the week, and we'll be reappointing committee members, so we were not planning on scheduling any committee meetings next week. And in addition, I will be on vacation next week. I will be reachable by my cellphone or email if you need me for any reason. But unless anything comes up that we have to have an emergency committee meeting, Ms. Collins and I will work together on getting any of that set up that we need to have. But other than that, we'll be working on a board package to go out and probably be releasing a board package with about a committee meeting for the orientation meeting for the first of the year.
Okay.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any other additional business.
Thank you.
So we're supposed to be sworn in in, in the morning?
Yes.
Ten o'clock? Nine thirty?
Can't hear it.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty in the morning. Remember that, Brian, and...
I'll be there. I'll thank you.
Need to work on Coy.
Don't you have an aim gun? Go get it.
And, you know, kind of, call Ms. Lawson, I'm sure she knows, she knows about it, so I'll be there. Hopefully, all the board members can attend if possible.
This time, we'll also be sending out the conflict of interest forms that cannot be submitted prior to January 1st. Yes, I see Dr. Hausman smiling.
I'm sorry. I hate those things.
She'll be sending notes out to get those submitted.
Well, at least they've made it just once a year again. I mean, that, having to do it twice a year is ridiculous, but that's another thing that VACO has worked hard on down there to get, to try to get us, you know, not exempt from a lot of this stuff that the General Assembly has to put up with. Does anybody else on the board, any board member have anything to bring before the board at this time?
Since I don't think you can edit this, I'm taking it tonight.
Well, you can have it. Charles wants to charge you for stealing, we'll, we'll let him go at it, but I don't think he's going to do that. You deserve it. You earned that for the last eight years.
Vaughn give us a quick report on the Apex Center.
Okay, Mr. Vaughn?
Success on concrete. Foundation works in. Concrete was in place in the last week. When I left to close the business last Thursday, the plan was for steel to start to be delivered on 28th, which is tomorrow. And they want to put that western side of the bay and lean to it up, starting to recommend first, if they want it to make a windbreak up there. So that's where we're at. I expect to see some steel going up next week to do whether the wind allows them to work.
Well, if it's any outlook on the extended forecast in February, I mean, we're going to have a warm February, it looks like. So hopefully have some good weather. But we do need rain. I would say, you know, we're getting into kind of a drought situation here within the county, and hopefully do, we do get some water. We need some water. Anything else? Anybody got, any board member would like to bring before the board at this time? Here none? I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and be safe, and we'll see you in the upcoming year. year. And we are adjourned.